One, two, three, four.
Okay, you are recording and you are live.
All right, well, good evening everyone and welcome to the first planning and zoning meeting, first Thomason Planning Zone meeting of 2021. This is a special meeting, so we can't make any changes to the agenda. We got to stick right to it.
Why is this a special meeting, Ralph?
Because I asked that same question of Stacy last week and it's a special meeting because we haven't voted on the dates for any of our January 2021 meetings yet.
Okay.
But Tom, Tom, every meeting with you is special. So seated.
Is he blushing?
I it's I don't know, he's too far away from the camera, I can't see. So seated for tonight's meeting will be Joe Hartz, Tom Mueller, Elizabeth Jameson, Bill Guerrero, and myself, Ralph Salone. And we have a guest this evening, Attorney Byrne, and our staff person Stacy is with us also. So I don't see any members of the general public looking to come in to the meeting, so we'll just jump right into the agenda. First on the agenda is a public hearing for I gotta go to my screen, that's too small for me, for a special permit application number 2020-11-18-01 for mixed-use residential unit on 486 South Main Street in a general commercial zone. We can't actually do anything with this public hearing tonight because the newspaper didn't run the ad properly, so that's tabled to the February meeting, assuming that we vote to have a February meeting when it comes up for discussion later on in the agenda. Next on our agenda is approval of the me of the minute she's is approval of the meeting minutes from our December 2nd, 2020 meeting. Let's take a few minutes to go through them and see if we see anything that needs to be changed or if they look okay.
Ralph, I have one comment.
Go ahead.
Says others present, William and Brittany Sherry. I don't recall that they were there either in person or remotely.
Yeah, actually, that is correct because if I recall correctly, they were in transit.
Never joined.
And they're unable to join.
Right, they never made it.
Good one, Tom.
Good catch.
That's the only thing I picked up on.
I also don't see anything else that needs to be addressed. If somebody wants to make a motion to accept these as amended.
Tom Mueller, so moved.
Is there a second to the motion?
Elizabeth Jameson, second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Joe Hartz, how do you vote on the motion?
Joe Hartz, aye.
Tom Mueller, how do you vote on the motion?
Tom Mueller, aye.
Elizabeth Jameson, how do you vote on the motion?
Elizabeth Jameson, aye.
And Bill Guerrero, how do you vote on the motion?
Bill Guerrero, aye.
And Ralph Salone also votes aye, so it passes unanimously, Stacy.
Really noted.
Next on the agenda, new business referral from the Town of Thomaston Board of Selectmen, acceptance of Goodwin Court as a public road by the Town of Thomaston.
Next item is old business on the agenda.
Oh geez, Tom, I you know what? I should have had some coffee before we started this meeting. You're right. So next on our agenda is old business draft regulation amendments, commercial vehicles signed solar, etc. We did quite a bit of work on the the commercial vehicle thing. I don't, I don't think we need to go into it anymore tonight. I just asked Stacy to carry on the agenda so that when we actually start having in-person meetings again, we can set it up for a public hearing at that time. Are there any any other of the regs that you had a chance to address, Stacy?
Ralph, with Bill Guerrero, if I can just question, do we have a final draft of what that looks like?
I can pull it up right now if you'd like me to.
If you don't mind, Ralph, is that okay? I just want to, I just want to do a quick scan because we made certain changes last time we met.
You are correct, Bill. And Stacy, I'm thinking we might also be a good idea to email that out to everybody.
I had, but I can email that out again right now if you'd like me to.
Well, pull it up on the screen for us.
Thank you.
Stacy, is that the one that you emailed out on 12/2?
Yes, I believe so.
That's great. I'm sorry about that, Stacy. I didn't pull that up at that time.
Sorry, it'll be good to refresh our memories anyways.
Sure.
Yeah, because there were some language changes of words that we that we made some recommendations on. I think we're really close to finishing this.
One second, pulling it up right now.
And Brian Davis, I see you joined. You're you're welcome to unmute yourself if you'd like.
Okay, it should be up on your screen right now.
Yes. Any way you can make it bigger?
Thank you, Ralph.
I mean, I can read it, but I don't know if Bill's gonna be able to see that.
Does that in any way help?
That's nice.
Okay.
So this is good, Bill. It has all the changes tracked in red.
Yeah, I know. It's like I like when you do tracking. I like that. Yeah, we spent a lot of time on the standards like D4, right?
A lot, a lot of time, yeah.
Hold that screen there, Stacy, please. So Stacy?
Yes.
So on number four, I'm just looking at the language.
Okay.
Okay, so other than those exempted in section 62E3.
Which is down here.
Construction vehicles. Including but not limited, it's just a whole run on. I don't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this was the one that we spent a lot of time on, trying to nail it down a little bit.
And I'm not just not arguing, I'm not commenting necessarily about how what we're saying, it's just how it's being said.
No problem, because this one was a bit of a challenge.
Maybe you could just reword it to say construction vehicles, including but not limited to backhoes, bobcats, blah, 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 shall not be allowed unless exempted under section.
You're right. Thank you, Ralph. It's the commas that are.
No problem. Unless exempted and unless expressly exempted in point two, point E, point three below.
And then you take the first part out.
There you go.
How's that look, Bill?
Yeah, okay. Oh, that's whoops, sorry. Construction vehicles. Okay, thank you. Much, okay, now I understand it.
No, I like that a lot better myself.
I just, I have a comment, Brian Davis.
Let's hear it.
It's not a big deal, but bobcats are a trade name. They're not a type of.
Okay, what would you prefer it?
Or Skid steer loader is the technically the.
Oh, good point.
Word of it, name of it.
There we go.
Is that?
Yeah, two words, skid steer.
Yeah, bobcat could be a mini excavator also.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a, that's a company name, a brand name, it's not really.
Okay.
Awesome, Brian.
Machine remnant of it.
Okay. Well, that's better.
Yeah.
But that brand name is almost like the Kleenex brand name, you know?
Right, yeah, true.
Yeah, it's, it's like vice grips or Kenelox tires.
Exactly.
Yeah.
No, but yeah, you're right. It's a little broader this way, yeah.
Okay. So moving on to six, so when we say front yard, is that clear? I mean, front yard? I mean, is, does everybody have a front yard?
I believe somewhere is back in our definitions, the yard is defined as anything in front of the plane made by the front wall of the house.
Okay, all right, as long as it goes.
Am I correct in saying that, Stacy?
Yeah, I'm pulling up because we actually did not too long ago. I'll read it to you and maybe can make sure that it's retaining in the way you want it to. Front yard, an open space extending across the full width of a lot and lying between the street line of the lot and the nearest facing wall of a principal building on the same lot. A front yard abuts the street on which the property is addressed according to the Town of Thomaston Assessor's Office.
Okay. So it ties back to the definition, okay. Okay. All right, under E, double I, triple I.
Okay.
Okay, so construction vehicles owned by the permanent resident of the property and which are exclusively used on the subject property for private, non-commercial purposes. So I don't want to get caught up in too much of this, but when you talk about resident, is a resident also defined or is it member of the household? I mean, is it? When we say permanent resident, are we defining, is that defined elsewhere in our regs?
Um, no.
I don't believe it is, but permanent resident is just somebody living there on a long-term basis.
Yeah, no, I get that. That's fine. No, I'm not making a case of, I'm just questioning, that's just asking a question, that's all.
Steve, do you have a suggestion?
I don't know. Permanent resident, you could leave that, that's a, it's a well-understood term, so we don't need to have.
Okay.
Okay, I think we're pretty, we're pretty safe with that.
And I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to change it to property owner because.
Right, what about a tenant?
Somebody could be leasing the property, right?
Yeah, that's, oh, that's a good point, yes. That, thank you. Yeah, I don't want necessarily, you know, also make sure that the terms we're using are either defined elsewhere in the regs or are, you know, common language where it's pretty clear on the face.
Yep, that's right, Bill. Yes, we're safe with that, that, you know, that ever went to court, we had explained to a judge, right, we can go with the commonly understood meaning of those terms.
Hey, hey, listen, Attorney Byrne, I was interesting in a, in a case where there was a huge proceeding over a colon or a semicolon in a plus. So I you know, a lot of billable, a lot of billable hours on that matter, but.
Sad one was with the Lime Rock Race Track where they, the legislature amended a statute, yeah, I think they took out a comma and put in a period or something like that. Yeah, went all the way to the Supreme Court.
That's it.
Well, wasn't there a big deal for a long time, Steve, in the wetlands regulations about you know, something that is part of a farming operation? I think there was a comma issue with that, too, yeah.
Takes you back to middle school English or whatever with the with what I guess. Yeah, so you're right to pay attention now, this can save you a lot of money down the road.
Okay. That's my comments. Thank you, Stacy. Thank you, Ralph.
No problem.
So, but now, since Attorney Byrne is here, and we had talked prior about permit revocations and that type of stuff. If actually, I'd like Attorney Byrne just to comment a little more on.
Right.
On that.
Okay, so permit revocations, if there's nothing in your regulation about revoking the permit, then the, you know, the rule is that a special permit just runs with the land. So if you wanted something, you'd have to put in like a revocation procedure because, you know, the special permit is seen as a property right, so you know, you know, if you're going to revoke it, the person's entitled to a hearing and notice, so.
So if the, if the property changes ownership, that's not, that doesn't mean this special permit can be revoked, right?
Exactly, we, with zoning, it's the use, not the user, so what you're looking for is, you know, if they violated, you know, you give them special permit for this use and there may be some conditions of approval and they violate those, or they violate these, one of these conditions here.
So the way, the way this particular reg is written, it, you know, it's, it's to allow a certain number of vehicles of a certain size on any particular property.
And if. And on a certain size lot as well.
Yes, so if somebody gets a permit and they have a 20,000 pound truck and they sell that and they get a 50, an 80,000 pound truck, then that, I guess the permit isn't revoked, but the 80,000 pound truck is not permitted because it, they only had a permit for a 20,000 pound truck.
Right, so that's not.
I'm not sure if those numbers are correct, I'm just.
Yeah, I know. With the DMV designation, DOT designates these things, but, right, so that truck wouldn't be covered, so they wouldn't be protected by the permit, you could use the, you know, the usual cease and desist procedures.
Yeah, it's just, just like anybody else not keeping it within the guidelines of their permit.
A change of ownership, that would not, you can't make a contingent on that, that's for sure. In revocation, that scene is, the courts have allowed that as another enforcement tool. But you need to have a process outlined in your regulations for that, where the person gets notification to get a hearing, that sort of thing.
Do you have a template for any of that, Steve, that we could?
I can find, typically you see those with earth excavation. We could adapt it for this.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to. Can we have a generic one that we could use for any special permit?
No, we could adapt it, sure, you know, for home occupations, that sort of thing, too, right, where it's.
Yeah, I could see a variety of situations where it could potentially come into play.
I think that would be a good thing to incorporate into our regs.
Yeah, we can work on something. Yeah, the one thing you can't do, which I've seen struck down, is where they do where a change of ownership, you can't, that's the one thing you can't have, but otherwise, yeah, the court is just interested in protecting a person's, you know, property rights, so before you revoke it, yeah, they get a fair hearing, notice and hearing.
So Stacy, let's put that on our to-do list.
To do.
Well, I have a question on, it's a two-part question. Are we doing it as a special permit so we can get the public input and, you know, tailor it according to the neighborhood versus a site plan approval that might expire every five years that we can revisit automatically? Like, did we? Or is a site plan approval really because there's nothing being constructed, like it doesn't make sense to do a site plan approval?
Well, that's kind of where I would have answered is that's really more towards improvements to the site, like not the, the right, use of the site as a place to store my, my one commercial vehicle.
Yeah, okay.
The other, you know, just in general, anything that's a site plan, you also always have to worry about automatic approvals and such.
Right.
Because the special permit stays with the property forever and ever, I kind of, I still have a problem with B3, which allows a second commercial vehicle in class four through six and/or one commercial vehicle in class seven or eight.
That was a place to start the discussion. If you guys don't want that to be there, we can tweak that.
I mean, I wouldn't mind it so much if there was a way to cancel the permit at some future time if they weren't using it. But just to have it there and then somebody can go in there afterwards, I I don't feel real good about that one.
But I guess, I guess the thinking, though, Tom, is that if a property is approved for, let's say, a second commercial vehicle of class one through six and nothing on the property changes and even if, you know, even if a new owner comes in, why wouldn't it still be approved for the second class four through six vehicle? But nothing changed, you know, they didn't, they didn't subdivide the lot, they didn't, I don't know, build, build a pool in the front yard or something, I don't, I can't think of what.
I just think it's getting too intense with two vehicles of, of, of the larger classes, the fourth and sixth, or even one of seven or eight.
So you just want to keep that at the one?
Yeah, I don't know if you want to have a tractor-trailer truck parked on your, your neighbor's yard next to your house.
That, that goes back to, to what we said, or what I've been saying all along. I mean, you know, if you have a quarter acre lot, then certainly there's no way you're going to get a tractor trailer on there in any way, shape or form, but, you know, in some of the bigger lots in town, you would never know. Several of my neighbors have the, the big dump trucks, the tri轴s that they park in their yard and you can't, you can't really tell because the lots in my neighborhood are bigger because we don't have city sewers.
And that was kind of the reason for this is kind of an escape valve, allowing for the situation where it could be a large lot. It could be someplace where everything would be so far back from the street, as Ralph says, that you're not going to see anything and as long as it fit within these confines, did we really care if we couldn't see it?
And plus, the special permit process gives us the opportunity to review and scrutinize any addition that might get made there, you know what I mean, Tom?
No, I understand that. It just seems that this is opening it up too mu, too much in my mind, that's all.
And, and that's certainly a consideration for you guys. That was why we put in there that one of the criteria for approval under the special permit was lot size, so you could take into account what Ralph is saying that on a, this might not say be something you want to approve on a quarter acre piece of property, but it may be something that you're willing to consider on a 10-acre piece of property.
And by forcing it to go through the special permit process, we, as in the commission, get to review that and decide on it, you know?
Okay, you're not saying you're going to always grant this, yeah, this is not an automatic, you're saying you're allowing for the possibility provided these things are met on that specific site.
And you never know, too. I mean, sure, it might be a 10-acre lot, but the house might be built way in the back of the lot and, and there's no room except in the front yard to put the truck, and in that case, you know, it wouldn't be allowed.
Well, we were talking about, I didn't think of this before, but we were, we were talking about the word residence as, or as the resident or residents. Is there any reason that we would exclude or like limit this to single-family properties versus multi or like, you know, in the case of like, you know, some condo complex or is that, would they also be allowed to apply? I don't know if that matters or if that if that factors in, you know, to the thought process of this, or if that's, you know, we'll just do the special permit and we take all that into consideration, like say someone wants to do that, like in a condo complex, I don't know.
And there would be a couple of people I can think of that for whom that may.
And I can understand, I can understand your, your point of view, but I'm not so sure we should limit it to single-family lots.
And so you think, yeah, like the special permit process, just notifying the abutters would address that with the hearing. So no matter what kind of.
And every single person on that property is going to get noticed, so.
Notice, yeah. And I, again, I didn't even think of it until like.
No, it's a fair question.
Well, that kind of brings up another point. Now, who would actually be taking out the special permit? Would it be the property owner or the person living there if it was two different individuals?
Permit, yeah, if it goes on the land records.
Well, yeah, our special permits have to be signed off by the property owner, or a letter has, from the property owner has to be in there saying that so-and-so is acting on my behalf or whatever.
But Steve, would you, would that, you know, does that come into play at all, that it's multiple people on the property, but there is only one owner? Any different than multiple members of a family or anything?
Well, that's the thing, I think you just have the owner, you know, the owner would have to be the applicant or authorize it, and then really any resident on there, the permanent resident, if you will, could make the application.
But that still means, you know, if the property is approved for one truck in the class four to six size range, right, that doesn't mean everybody that lives on that property can have one truck in the four to six size range. It means there's one truck allowed, period.
Right, for the law.
Well, also, when, since the permit gets filed on the land records, if that's the owner allowing that in someone else's name, it gets filed, it technically would get filed on there in, in connection with their deed, so should it technically be in the landowner's name because, but if they allow, I mean, because someone else's name could be attached to that permit, even though it's a special permit, that tenant moves, I don't, I don't just, is that a technical? Should it technically be in the property owner's name if it's because it's something filed online?
Well, the, the special, the special permit is for the property. It doesn't really matter who owns the property. Or, I'm sorry, who applies for it, as long as the property owner gives their permission for that to happen.
But then what happens when either one cell, a tenant vacates or that owner sells, there's like someone else's name that was.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter, the, the permit goes with the property. So that tenant may move or the owner may sell or both may happen, it's still, that permit stays with the property.
So you think that's covered with as long as the property owner signs?
Yeah, yeah.
Authorizes, yes.
And again, if nothing changes on the property, you know, if they don't build the house out bigger or, or subdivide the property, then there's no reason why a permit that was granted should not continue.
So the, so the property owner, a tenant vacates, the owner still owns it, they want to subdivide, even though that permit has someone else's name. Even though that permit has someone else's name on it, them as the landowner, it's still, they can do what they can still subdivide or.
Right, but, but if they subdivide, that may render the special permit no longer valid.
Right, there's that possibility, but they have the right to still, you know, even though someone else's name is attached, they can go in and forward in the future, do whatever. Changes they want to, you know, make with their.
Yes, yes. Okay, we good?
Yep.
All right. So let's, let's call this our final draft and we'll tuck it away for when we can have real public hearings.
Yeah, and now that we have been through a, a good vetting of this regulation. It'd be more ea- it'd be easier to respond to questions at the public hearing. You know, because we've, you know, already been in and out and up and down, you know, the language in here. So. Uh, I think we're all comfortable with why. The regulation says what it says, not just that it was a copy of somebody else's, which we just copied and adopted, you know? So we kind of made it our own.
Correct.
Good. It was good input from everybody. That's great.
I apologize. I just wanted to let, um. Chairman know that that was Sally. Um, she said she was having some technical difficulties getting into the meeting. She apologizes. She's not going to be able to attend tonight.
That's okay.
Yeah, we don't give out the merits here.
Yeah, I'm keeping a count.
We don't give them out yet, Bill. That may still.
I better be a good boy then. Okay.
All right. So we're satisfied with this for now. We'll, we'll, we'll put it on the shelf and we can have real public hearings.
I'm good.
Stacy, could you send out this final, final?
Sure.
And, um. Did you do any work on any of the other ta- amendments, Stacy?
Um.
Dying solar, anything like that?
No more than what I had sent out way back when. I think I need to send you, it's been a while. I need to resend a refresh.
Yeah. So let's, so for our February meeting.
Yes.
Let's, let's pick the next most important one to start working on.
Well, that kind of leads into what we were talking about in terms of new, under new business, but if you want to. If you want to wait, we can get there or.
Uh, yeah, just re- just remind me when we get there.
Sure.
All right. So on to new business, uh, number one. Uh, section eight twenty four referral from Town of Thomaston Board of Selectmen, acceptance of Goodwin Court as a public road by the Town of Thomaston. Did, um, did you talk to, um, Glenn about this?
Yes, I ta- I, uh, talked with Ed, uh, the first selectman and also briefly with Glenn Clark. Um, I have up on your screen, my apologies. I thought it was in your packet. It was not. It's a summation of the situation from town attorney Mike Ryback. So as a brief history, I'll scroll through here a little bit. That Goodwin Court began as a private passway when owner Ralph Goodwin created a right of way to pass between Elm Street. And South Main Street back in nineteen twenty-two. And with the passage of times, more buildings were constructed on the properties, including an apartment building. It's right here and I can bring up the GIS for reference if you need that. That have subsequently been converted to condos. Subsequent deeds carry over the description of a private way, even though the town subsequently took over maintenance of the road. And the public had long used the road.
So does the, does the road meet the town standards?
Well, just as a background here, um, the town has long been maintaining Goodwin Court. It includes plowing, paving, pothole repair, surface drainage, a sidewalk, snow and debris removal. Nobody really can identify when that began. Now, in the summer of twenty twenty, the town began, began a project to widen Goodwin Court. And you can kind of see here the, um, where I'm here. Let me pull, make, um. Hang on one second. I am going to.
Goodwin Court is the, the street where they, they broke that gas main over the summer, right?
Yes.
Okay.
No. No, that's Maple Street.
Uh, which one is Goodwin Court then? I'm getting confused.
It goes between, uh, Stonecrest Realty and Patrow Gas Station.
Oh, okay. All right.
I believe it's one way coming out to, uh.
It is. It's you enter at Elm and you go out to South Main. That's the direction. There had been a project to widen Goodwin Court during the project, a question arose over whether it had ever formally been. Accepted as a town road, even though it has been maintained by the town for many years. The picture here that I'm showing you has stakes which shows where they wanted to widen the road to. Um, it was at that point that the question arose whether or not it was public or private. And here are some additional pictures. These are all the abutting properties. And this is a very dark shaded picture, but I can bring up a better one if you'd like. Attorney Ryback had stated that given the circumstances, it appears the prior owners impliedly dedicated the road for public use and the town impliedly accepted the road. Um, while it is true, uh, Goodwin Court began as a private way in the nineteen twenties, however, the town has maintained the road for many years. Previous owners allowed such transition to public use and the maintenance to occur. To date, we are unaware of any properties on the road, at least in recent times, attempting to block off access to the road. Or preventing the public from passing over it. Moreover, property owners on the road have not objected to the town's use of public funds to maintain the road, repair the sidewalk or clear snow. Uh, we also understand that Goodwin Court is on the state aid for municipal roads list for the town of Thomaston. Uh, Assessor treats Goodwin Court as if it were any other public road in Thomaston, even if deeds for properties abutting Goodwin Court mentioned the street as a private way. This can be explained by the fact that deeds often simply copy property descriptions from older deeds. This is something I have noticed as well. Adoption of the road would include the areas that have been improved and maintained by the town, and this includes surface drainage related to the road and the adjacent sidewalk. Which was installed and is maintained by the town. Depending on the town's history and maintenance of the right of way surrounding the paved surface, it may include an area wider than the road itself, though we must stress that the town is generally limited to the areas it has improved and maintained over the years. The town is interested in trying to take care of this. Un- unclear situation by accepting the town road and in order for them to do so, it is the subject of an eight twenty-four review by your, this commission in order to. Find whether or not. You know, it is. In agreement with the plan of conservation and development, it's certainly within your authority to review this and as you likely know. Whatever the board of selectmen opts to do, they have to read your decision at the town meeting where they discuss further. Whether or not to officially accept the road.
So back to my original question, does the road meet town specs at this point?
Getting out the, um, subdivision regs, bear with me. Cause that's where the road information is.
And then while you're looking that up, I have, uh, I guess a question for attorney Byrne. So if this is still technically, this is a private road, even though the town has been maintaining it.
Right.
Does the owner of the road have to request that the town take it over? Or if the owner does not, are, is it almost like? A taking of property under eminent domain or something?
At this point, I mean, I don't think this commission needs to worry about that question. It's eight dash twenty-four. Basically the municipality, you know, they're considering this action. So before they can. Take any action, they need to, uh, refer to you guys for a, uh, report. Basically. What you look at is whether the acceptance of this road, you know, it suits the plan of development and stuff. It, you know, it would, you know. Further the comprehensive plan, does it, you know, um. Promote public safety and wealth, you know, the typical zoning questions and planning.
Yeah, yeah.
That kind of, in terms of the actual deal, whether there, this is by agreement or is the town moving to sort of just, yeah, take the road, we. Don't look into that part of it.
So are you saying, Steve, are you saying then that the issue that Ralph raised? Is, is not for consideration at this time by the commission, that all we are obligated to do. Right now is make a recommendation to the selectmen to either, uh, approve or not approve it as a town road?
Correct, right. Ralph raised, it's really not material to the, uh, eight dash twenty-four. Role that the commission plays. So we look at it strictly as a question of planning and, and someone of zoning too. It's mostly a planning question, of course.
So, so from a planning perspective, not a zoning perspective, so from a planning perspective, you know.
Yeah, I just pulled it up. It is under municipal planning commission. So we're wearing our planning.
Yeah, that's right. Exactly. So.
So I think, I think under the planning section, then, you know, it does, it does. Meet our, our town plan of conservation and development.
That's correct, right.
And it, it would be. Geez, I'm having a tough time getting words tonight. It would be congruent with the, the plan, with the P O C D and it would probably be a good thing overall for the town.
Yeah, no, I agree. From a planning perspective, it's consistent, right? With, with a plan of development and it's consistent with the needs of the community, right?
Right. And is that, is that road also in the triple D? The downtown development district?
Ooh, I don't know. Who says it?
Yes, because if you recall, we extended down to the park.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Right, yes.
So, so I think it makes even more sense then for it to be a town road.
I have the GIS aerial. Obviously this was before the work was done, but just so you can see. You know, it is somewhat of a tight squeeze there.
There was some considerable expense that the town incurred to redo that.
Yes. Yes, and it was a little bit of a surprise.
How so?
Insofar as nobody realized that this wasn't actually already a town road.
Yeah.
Well, more, more so the reason why the residents along that road would anticipate the town taking ownership. All right.
And just so you know, to go to that question that Ralph raised. Um, in his letter, attorney Ryback did strongly recommend to the commi- uh, to board of selectmen, which I assume they're going to do, is that they're going to notify them of this when it does appear on their agenda. For town meeting. So that they will have their opportunity, if they have any questions or concerns to state them then.
So then I, I think it would probably be good if somebody made a motion to, um. Report back to the, um, the, uh, board of selectmen that the, the. Plating and zoning commission feels that this is, um, that the, the town taking ownership of this road is consistent with the P O C D and being that the. The road is also in the downtown development district. Again, it would, um, uh, be beneficial for, for it to be a town owned road. Am I missing anything?
I don't believe so.
I don't think so. That's good.
Tom Mueller so moved.
Thank you. Um, is there a second to the motion?
Joe Hart's second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the vo- on the motion? Okay, Joe Hart's, how do you vote on the motion?
Joe Hart's aye.
And Tom Mueller, how do you vote on the motion?
Tom Mueller, aye.
And Elizabeth Jameson, how do you vote on the motion?
Elizabeth Jameson, aye.
And Bill Guerra, how do you vote on the motion?
Uh, Bill Guerra, aye.
And Ralph Sloan also votes aye, so that motion carries unanimously. So let me see here. Um, next is a, a discussion of possible text amendment for detached accessory apartments.
We had.
Stacy, I don't, was that just you and I talking or was that, or was that a discussion with the entire commission?
I think it was a brief, not certainly not a detailed, but I think it was a brief. Mention at the, at a previous meeting about. Whether or not this was something we wanted to look into. If I recall correctly, it stemmed from my enforcement report where I had asked a question. About, um, the commission's position on enforcement for. Um, detached accessory apartments of longstanding that are only now be discovered, you know? For instance, they've been on the property, oh, say twenty years, but they've only come to. Our office's attention now.
The one you, we were talking about in particular was the Hickory Hill Road, which is across the street from me.
That is one. There's another one that actually is on Elm Street. Um, so that.
Is that the one with the garage state? Is that the one with the garage?
Yes, it is that they have a large garage, barn garage structure. Um, at the back and there is an apartment on, uh, on the second floor of that. We know it exists because. I had spoken with a neighbor that had at one time lived in the not too distant past, lived in it, so.
So we, she brought it up as enforcement and then we, I just asked the question, I think at the end of, and I was like, why do we have this reg? I was, I just raised the question.
Yeah, there was a question, I think, yeah, and you're, yeah, I believe it was Elizabeth who had asked, is there a reason we? Do not wish to have detached accessory apartments?
Well, see, when this. Go ahead, Liz.
Well, the thought process was if it, it not only enforcement, but. I realize it would cut down enforcement, but you know, property values, um, some of these people that would try to work with that, you know, like that. Like the Hickory Hill Road instance, or the other one is sort of, it's just awkward and I think it depreciates property values by. You know, making there, I, I think it's not going to be so easy for people to give that up all the time. And to make it, to, to try to make it work with some strange connection is, is almost a, you know, detriment to the property value. That was just.
So when this regulation was originally crafted many years ago and, uh, it was, um. Sambardo was the staff person at the time. That's how far back it goes. Uh, the original intent was just to limit it to members of the immediate family. But over the years, that intent has changed where now, um. You know, it's we, we are allowing a more broader. Um, demographic for occupancy and, um. At the time, it, it did make sense to. Limit it to part of the house, but you know, over the years, things change and. A- as I look at it now and, and the way the, the regulations stand now, I'm, I'm really not that sure. Uh, if it does make sense to keep it as part of the house, it, it seems at this point in time that it might make more sense to allow. Um, detached structures, um. Be- because you know, I see more and more. Barns and, and garages and, and whatnot that are detached are being converted to dwellings and. And some of them are really, really nice and I don't.
Yeah.
I, I don't see why we should prohibit that.
I think you can keep the same scale, like we have the same or similar ratio, ratio, I guess, from house to apartment. These could be very similar requirements. I don't think it would be that big of a change and, you know.
I, I do think it can be done. I, I've. I've been, I've worked in other towns that have it and they have, you know. You know, specific, specific requirements as far as what it looks like from the road that it's, you know, that it not look like. For lack of a better term, a, a two family situation, that it looks like a continuation of the existing residence. Yeah.
So, um, does, does anybody have any issues? Uh, if we ask Stacy to look at that and maybe, um, make some recommendations for our next meeting?
Oh, I think that's fine.
So Stacy, why don't, why don't you, uh, why don't you look into that and see how? So Stacy, why don't, why don't you, uh, why don't you look into that and see how we might change that? Um, and, and we'll talk about it more on our next meeting. One of the, I think one of the phrases that we'll probably need to go in there would be, uh, maintaining the character of the neighborhood.
Agree. Yeah.
Stacy, I believe there's another one up on East Main Street, too.
East Main?
East Main way in the back, four, four sixty East Main.
Okay, I will look into it.
Yeah, and I just think maybe it should, I don't know if a minimum acreage is the, is the solution, but it couldn't be sub divided, you know, probably shouldn't be subdivided off or something.
And a- anywhere that I've dealt with it, yes, there was an acreage requirement for it.
And so I have a couple questions, if I may, on this. So, off the top of my head, it sounds almost like we're all going to be allowing de facto, uh, two-family dwellings, you know, two-family homes in our, in our town.
Uh, no, not quite. If, if we're allowing detached structures, it's actual multiple dwelling units on the same property.
So we're asking, well, so is two-family not necessarily in one building, but two families, meaning that you can, you can have two separate structures, two families, one-on-one structure, and one in the next, right?
But we're, we're already allowing that under, I, I'm sorry, we're already allowing something very similar to that under the current regs. Under the current regs, the apartment, the accessory apartments don't have to be blood relatives. They just have to be in the same house.
A- and so I'm going to go back to the time when Sam Berta was here, I was there, and the intent, I think, the accessory apartment at the time was for that purpose, okay? Um, of having a member of the family, you know, reside there, okay?
And, and you are correct, at, at the time, that was the purpose, and actually, even at the time, we were calling them in-law apartments. We were not calling them accessory apartments. And, and over the, over the years, that definition has changed and broadened.
But it, it's a nuance that's still important, because an in-law apartment versus an accessory apartment, hmm, um, maybe the same thing, but the connotations could be different. The, the other thing is with regards to, um, septic, right?
Yes.
I mean, because the, uh, the, the lot has to be, if a septic has to be big enough, you know, to provide for septic, and if it's sewer.
It still has to meet all those regs, yeah.
Right. So if it's sewer, they need a sewer permit, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And Torrington area, if it's one of those places that has a septic system, very often they require the accessory apartment. Well, as they certainly have to demonstrate that they have capacity, but very often they are requiring for them to have their own septic system specifically for that.
So Stacy, what's the underlying reason? Is there a burning reason for wanting to do this? I mean, I know we have several accessory apartments right now, which, you know, we're looking to deal with, right? But why are we looking at this? What's the underlying reason for bringing this issue up?
Well, there's a, a couple of reasons. I'm sorry, Elizabeth, were you going to say something? I didn't hear you.
Well, no, I'm, I'm oversimplified, but I kind of asked the question why we do it that way, because in trying to come to terms with what the requirements were with what Stacy has to deal with, with some enforcement issues, you know, I think the same numbers and, you know, situations and sewer and whatever, you know, other, you know, hookups that they need, it, it's the same, except that if someone were to try to attach them, I feel like it could be more awkward look. It, it would be more of a detriment to the property value to try to have some strange walkway attachment. So I just asked the question.
That's what sparked, yeah, and that's what sparked this discussion. There was a, um.
You it that way. It was more of a question, Bill, I guess.
And it's also a matter of, you know, when you guys first hired me, there was a large amount of backlog zoning complaints, um, some of which pertain to these sort of detached accessory apartments, and going into some of these, it quickly became clear that some of these have been around for a very long time.
Yeah.
And not that it's being here twenty years means they shouldn't follow the regulations, but there is some practicality involved, and so that was the start of where my question came in.
And then when we broaden them, I mean, I know this isn't necessarily, it doesn't really fit in, but I guess it dovetails when, um, Jeremy was here, we had to deal with that regulation on those temporary medical, you know, units. I mean, there's these other, you know, or like Ralph said, there's these other types of accessory apartments, I guess, if you want to put it all in the business. Accessory apartment. We broadened it.
So that was where the whole thing started with, and you know, I'm, and again, my, my goal, you know, I'm, I'm enforcing the regs, I'm need, you know, wanted to let you know there's an issue here. Is this a priority for enforcement, or do, are you amenable to changing the regs so that these aren't necessarily any longer in violation, or, you know, I was basically looking for a little guidance, which, you know, when, I think I have another one that I'm going to be asking you shortly, a little bit later on, and it's basically because I'm trying to pick your brain and see, you know, engage, you know, is this something you, you feel is an issue? Is there another way you're looking to solve it? I'm looking for some direction.
And just off the top of my head, I feel like there's so many of the same requirements that could be met. You know, nine, like eighty or so percent of the requirements could be the same as, as far as like the ratio or, you know, um, whatever requirements we have in place already, it's just the detached question. It's, I, I feel it's not, in my mind, I just feel it's not such a drastic, you know, difference, or, or steering away from our current regs.
And I, I would tend to agree with Liz. I, I really can't see any good reason why we should not allow the detached structures, because, you know, if you look around at some of the places that have been, you know, in years past, they were a barn, and now they've been converted to an apartment, they look really, really nice.
Yeah.
And they, they add, they add to the value of the property rather than detract, you know?
I do think it's a bit of a slippery slope, and it doesn't hurt talking about it, but, um, take for example, the unit on Elm Street. Um, that's a quarter acre, or maybe even less.
Yeah.
And there's a big house, which is arguably, uh, two units, and the barn in the back, so, and, and all of these downtown lots are parking challenged. So, I mean, I would have a hard time permitting it in a one-acre zone, but not permitting it in a quarter acre zone. Um, a lot of these older houses have big barns.
I, yeah, I don't, I don't think we have to look so much at the, the lot size of the zone, but I think we do. I think parking is really a valid, uh, consideration. As a matter of fact, if I recall correctly, the, the current um, uh, accessory apartment regs do have a parking clause in them.
Yes.
Um, you know, you're, you're right, we don't want everybody parking on the street, or we don't want, um, you know, cars piled on top of each other.
Well, there'd be a requirement that they couldn't meet, so they couldn't have it.
Say that again, Liz?
So there's a requirement right there, that if they can't meet that, the parking requirement, they can't.
Right, right.
And especially, I guess, what Stacy and I were probably thinking is like a new one, a new house, new construction, having a minimum, maybe it would be three acres, so that you could accommodate that extra. I'm just throwing out a number there, but, you know, so you would, you, future ones to be built would meet that kind of, you know, requirement with, with a minimum acreage, just for, in that case, you know, just for new, new structures.
Well, I mean, if you guys want me to, I can, I can do something similar to what we did with the commercial vehicle. I can pull some from other towns. You can kind of get a flavor for what other other towns did in order to make this acceptable, and you can take a peek and see if it's an avenue you want to go further down.
That, that wouldn't be a bad idea. I, I just don't want to tackle five thousand things at once and not get anything done, you know?
Understood.
But, um, as far, as far as enforcement, I don't, I, I, me personally, I, I don't think it's enforcement priority, um, I, but I would like to know how everybody else, else feels about it.
I have, uh, my, my question, how is a, a detached accessory apartment or a, uh, how's it different than a caretaker's residence? Because we just approved one of those recently, I believe. A guest house, something like that.
Well, and that is a, a situation that is honestly a little unclear in our regs. We have the provision for a caretaker, but we don't have any language at all guiding it.
Yeah, or, or like a guest house would be kind of like.
A lot of other places where I've seen caretaker, it's usually for something that's like in a state situation where it's a ten, twenty acre property.
Yeah.
Um, whereas this is, if you were to want to go forward with it, this is more something.
For smaller units, and I think.
Yeah, any home could potentially get to.
I think if you actually looked around town, you'd find a lot more of it than, than.
Probably.
See now. Uh, I think I know of one on Elm Street that is, it might be what you're talking about, but it might not be what you're talking about. I'm not sure. Um, I knew somebody that lived in it at one point. That's how I know it's there.
And maybe, maybe we need to distinguish too between the conversion of existing structures like barns or garages versus building a new structure.
And we can do that too.
Perp, you know, just, just for an extra housing unit on the lot. I don't think that's something we want to do. I think if it's there already, and it's a barn or a garage, and it's been there for years and years, that's one thing, but if somebody wants to come in and build a new structure on, on their property just expressly for somebody to live in, then.
That's a different.
That's a whole different course, yeah.
Yeah.
My, my other question for Stacy is, uh, and I don't think there, there is one, but like a statute of limitations. How long does something have to be in use right now for us not to have an enforcement?
Well, I mean, if it's something that's built in a setback, you know, for instance, there's that three-year. And then if we don't have it to court within that three years, then it then becomes legally pre-existing non-conforming.
And then, and then any apartment or any accessory apartment.
Doesn't really pertain to you, right?
Right, um, Attorney Byrne?
That's right. It's just, um, in terms of the use of land, right, there's no, um, statute of limitations, so, you know, something could be there for fifty years, we could still go after it.
Which admittedly, we can argue back and forth on whether or not we want to do that.
Exactly.
I, I, I kind of thought that's what Stacy was looking for.
Yeah, I mean, do I, do I feel like there's a certain amount of, okay, something's been here for thirty years? You know, while nothing's officially in writing, but in all likelihood, many people knew it was there, and suddenly now.
Yeah, now it's become an issue for a new neighbor or something.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I didn't, that's, that was my question. I guess it was more for the Attorney Byrne, but.
But yeah, I kind of, I kind of hear what Ralph is saying, and what I think is the consensus here, that that's not necessarily something we're going to rush to to deal with, which is understood.
So I, I have a question, it's Bill. Um, so Ralph, when you said about converting, that we're okay with the existing structure being converted, but not new, why are you making the distinction between um, converting an existing structure to an accessory apartment versus building a new one?
Because now you're, go ahead, finish.
No, no, no. So, because if the, if there's enough land to put a, a new structure on, right? And it meets all the setbacks, why wouldn't they be able to build something new?
Well, my thinking was that we wouldn't want the footprint on the, uh, the property increased, but I may be all wet on that point.
Well, I'm just, I'm not saying yes or no to that. I'm just, just thinking about it, Ralph, you know, um.
That, that was my, that was my thinking. We wouldn't want to increase the, the coverage of the lot.
You're saying an exist, if there's an existing house and someone wanted to build a, a new accessory?
Yes, right, so.
Because I think what we don't want to happen is we don't want people building, you know, what they're calling these tiny houses in their backyard.
Well, that is true. I mean, I have a, um, a cloater farms barn, a roll-off that's twelve hundred square feet, and, um, you know, I can convert that into an accessory apartment. Um, but why wouldn't I be able to put something new in, that the same size is my, is my point? I, I understand the, the concerns about the footprint and, you know, putting more people into a single-family lot, because that was not a single family anymore, right?
Right.
Now it's not a single family. An accessory use, in my definition, was one where um, a member of the family, you know, that's older, right, wanted an accessory use.
Are you saying?
Or someone disabled, right?
That was the, that was the original intent years ago, but, but over the years, we've changed that.
How have we changed it?
We're, it's not limited to, um, to family members anymore.
Closing it down the road, or it does not include a family member. It's just attached, I guess.
We've, we've taken that immediate family member requirement out of the regs.
Well, not entirely, but there is a means now where it can eventually become something other than for the immediate family.
Yes.
Are you saying, oh, I have the question, but now I forgot.
The reg, as it's now written, requires it to be for immediate family for a period of time, and then afterward, it could be changed, and this is another one of those, um, we had spoken earlier with Attorney Byrne about whether or not um, a permit can change, dep, you know, can be, you know, taken away when the property changes hands, and that is honestly, that's in there, and it really, honestly, I don't believe, should be in there, um, but the way it's written now is the first five years, I believe, it has to be immediate family, and then after that, it could be for something other than immediate family.
Right, and, and it's really convoluted, is my point.
I guess you're, in your example, I think there's still other requirements that would have to be met, like parking, like access, or like, you know, the sewer, that may not, it, it does. I really think it would be hard to have a case where you can just clutter up your property with a bunch of buildings, if that's kind of where you're, and if you did, I mean, I, you know, there's a limit of maybe having one, whether it's attached or not, even if you have a barn or garage, there's still those other requirements, parking or whatever, I think. I get what you, I see what you're getting at, but I would think it would be a hard, um, you know, I don't think it would be such a, I think it would be such a rare case where you could do something that's so, I guess, you know, taking up so much of the lot. And I guess, and when I was thinking new structures, I was thinking even when you build a brand-new house, not just have an existing one, but.
Yeah, and it could come in that way. I do think for what it is worth, it will be hard for, you know, if we're talking more of the, the downtown area, we're talking largely R A fifteen, I do think it's going to be very hard in general for a lot of them to put a new structure because of the percent coverage they're required because of the setbacks, et cetera. Um, so I do think a new structure on those situ, in those situations is, there's a hurdle enough to get over.
This won't be, yeah.
But in an R A eighty, you certainly have enough room for.
Oh, absolutely. But it, you know, we're talking more the, you know, the immediate town center area where, which is largely the residential areas, R A fifteen, I don't know that anybody's going to be able to meet what we already have in place for, for building a structure.
Thank you, Stacy, you're right. So I, I'm just going to not belabor the, the conversation on this, or, or, uh, but I, my only concern, Ralph, was I, I didn't want to see, uh, the accessory apartment reg being used to create two-family, uh, going from a one-family zone to a two-family zone.
Yeah.
I, I agree with you. I wouldn't want to see that happen either.
Yeah, I don't think it would encourage that in the way that we're. Yeah, I don't think it would encourage that in the way that we're thinking of approaching it.
Yeah, I, yeah, the unintended consequence of the regulation is was my point that I was just concerned about because now it's going beyond setting up an accessory use, um, you know, for, uh, for within the family.
But I, but I think we could, I think we could still have the same, uh, you know, the same rules apply where it has to be, uh, a family member for the first five years or whatever that.
Yeah, and I'm not too, I'm not enamored about that five year piece either, you know? Because how we track, tracking that and.
Exactly, yeah.
And after five years, after five years, it becomes a two family house. They could charge rent.
Well, maybe, maybe we put a, uh, maybe we need to work on the reg a little more. And maybe if after the five years, if it is going to become a de facto two family house, and again, a charge rent, maybe we dictate that it has to be, um, a, what do you call a, um, um, low income housing.
I think actually you, you kind of do.
Hey, Tom, does it require two meters, Tom?
What was that, Bill?
I said, does it require two meters if you're having an accessory unit? Do you know if there's, it's, it's two sewer user fees? Yes.
Whether that's attached or not? It's still two, whether it's they're attached or not, right?
Correct. Okay. Tom, do you know if there's two separate power surfaces, two different meters? Like electric meters?
I think in our current regs, it calls for a single electric meter.
Supposed to be, you have one single utility.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and we don't charge, residential doesn't get charged on the basis of usage anyway. So it's strictly the number of units connected.
Oh, thank you, Tom. That's right. Just got my bill. Yeah, a dollar a day for flush, Tom. It's not bad.
The, uh, the, the, I think the, the, you could have one meter, one electric meter, one water meter. As long as the tenant landlord agree or the landlord pays the, the, you know, the electricity or utilities are included, they, they can work that out. It's not a requirement per se, I don't think.
No, but our, our regs require a single utility.
For, uh, in-law apartment or accessory apartments.
And I, and I would say that requirement would stay.
Yeah, yeah. For, yeah, most of the, uh,
Yeah, Bill, an example, an example would be on Smith Road where the woman applied for an accessory apartment and in a home-based business. So that would have been three.
Yeah.
User fees if all of those were approved. But this brings up another point in that the WPCA will need to be involved at some point to make sure that the number of connections are still within the capabilities of the collection system and the treatment plan.
Fair, fair point, yeah.
It's the same as, uh, if you're going to do a, uh, septic system, Torrington Area Health would have to okay the, either the existing system or the, uh, addition to.
Yep.
For a new conversion of an older building.
So it doesn't hurt to look to see what else is out there. Let's, why don't we just do that? And, and we can go from there. We'll have Stacy pull some other, uh, regs from other towns and see what they have. We don't, we don't, we're not committed to doing anything, but it doesn't hurt to look.
You take a look and then you decide maybe this isn't an avenue you don't, you want to go down right now, you know?
Sound good to everyone?
Yep, yep, yep.
All right, uh, next on the agenda, discussion of text amendments to zoning and subdivision regs required per, oh, I was reading off of yours, Stacy.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's right, go back to mine. Discussion of text amendments to zoning and subdivision regs required per the general permit for the discharge of stormwater for small municipal separate storm waters, storm sewer systems, uh, MS four general permit issued 2017. Stace, you want to give us the background on this?
Sure. Um, the town of Thomaston, I have a memo up and I will send this around to you guys. Um, has had a general permit for the discharges of stormwater from small municipal separate storm sewer system since at least 2005. And on January 20, 2016, the state of Connecticut issued new general permits to all municipalities that have more than 1,000 residents in urbanized areas, and that does include Thomaston. And this new general permit contained additional requirements and deadlines for the completion of these additional, these additional requirements. Um, as a part of all of this, the town of Thomaston prepared a stormwater management plan dated July 1st, 2017. And the plan, um, was to identify the town's progress to date in managing stormwater discharges as well as identifying needed improvements in six quote minimum control measures that are defined by the state. I've listed them here. Uh, public education and outreach, public involvement, participation, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site stormwater runoff control, uh, post-construction stormwater management and new development or redevelopment, uh, and pollution prevention slash good housekeeping. Now, when this all happened, the cog that we're a member of, Nogatuck Valley, um, in an effort to assist all the member municipalities, conducted an audit of land use regulations for all their member towns in order to provide, uh, recommendations, uh, town specific as to what changes they thought we needed to do in order to become compliant with these additional requirements to the stormwater permit. Because the state did set deadlines for when certain things had to happen. Um, uh, the cog, per their recommendations, had strongly recommended the town pass an ordinance regarding directly connected impervious area. Um, they had recommended a, an illicit discharge. You guys took care of that already. So we do already have that ordinance in place. Um, in addition, uh, they reviewed our, um, both our zoning regulations and our subdivision regulations and also the inland wetlands regulations. And they had several recommendations for things that we needed to include in ours, um, as pertains to you guys specifically, the subdivision and the zoning regulations, particularly in regard to the areas of construction sites, stormwater runoff control and post-construction stormwater management. Um, so as I mentioned before, we have the ordinance in place regarded to, regarding, uh, illicit discharges and connections. And, um, there are other things that we need to do and other deadlines that we are falling behind on. Um, now it's a five-year permit, so we would be looking for renewal um, in, I would assume 2022. I would, it would be my hope and my recommendation to have what we need in place so that we don't risk being in violation when renewal time comes around. So I have started to look, um, and see what we need and put together recommendations from the cogs. I've, uh, attended a couple of things, so I know what we need to have in there. I'm largely, I don't have anything ready for you right now, but I wanted to bring to your attention the fact that this is out there, this needs to be done, and I would argue probably trumps some of the other things we're looking at of zoning text amendments.
Well, it definitely trumps the detached, uh, in-law apartments.
Um, particularly in light of some other things that are, you're going to see on my report where it doesn't necessarily directly affect our, our permit, but it does. It's the, it's something that had, we had these in place already would definitely have been helpful. Um, so I'm just letting you know this, and I just wanted to propose that we begin, um, taking a look at the zoning regulations, since those are the most pressing and the most actively used. And once we get that in place, then we immediately follow up right after that with what we need in the subdivision regulations. Inland wetlands, they didn't have honestly quite as much to do, but they are also looking at some things that they need to add into theirs and in the nature of, uh, encouragement of low impact development in regard to required notifications to DEEP for projects of a certain size, et cetera. So this is largely just to give you guys a heads up that this is something I'm going to be working on and presenting to you guys in the upcoming month or two.
Sounds good to me.
Stacy, is that stormwater management plan on the town website somewhere?
Um, I believe so. Um, it does not have a front page, um, but it should be on there. Yeah.
Okay.
Are, are we good? Shall we move on to the next?
We can move on if you'd like.
I, I just, does anybody on the commission?
That's all I really had to say on this thus far.
All right, next is adoption of the 2021 meeting schedule. Do you want to put that on the screen, Stacy?
Sure, hang on one moment. One second, I gotta pull it up. Hang on one second, I'm trying to find where it is. Here we go. There you go. This is what's proposed. It's your same first Wednesday of every month.
It's not up there yet.
Uh, I'm, I don't know what's going on here. I'm having an issue here. Is that, can you see it now?
There it is, yep.
Okay. There's a lag here on the, the new and the pause sharing. Okay, so, um, these are all first Wednesdays. I don't think there's any conflicts that I can see, but.
Nah, I don't see it either. Um, it all, all looks okay to me. Does anybody want to make a motion to, um, accept, uh, or adopt the, the meeting schedules presented?
Tom Mueller, so moved.
Is there a second?
Elizabeth Jameson, second.
Um, any discussion on the motion? Joe Hartz, how do you vote?
Joe Hartz, aye.
Tom Mueller, how do you vote?
Tom Mueller, aye.
Elizabeth Jameson, how do you vote?
Elizabeth Jameson, aye.
Bill Guerra, how do you vote? Got to take yourself off mute first.
Bill Guerra, aye.
And Ralph Stallone also votes aye, so that, that carries unanimously, Stacy.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Uh, and then.
Ralph, it, it's just a quick point. Um, do we know if there are any expired terms coming up? Is anybody here tonight that is, that needs to be sworn in?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I know it's at the beginning of our regs. Uh, do you, can you pull that up, Stacy?
One second, I have it on the, I think it's actually even on the website, so hang on one minute.
I just came, I just happened to be one year, many years ago, Ralph, that we had, you know, we were making decisions and there was. Okay.
No, so we're all good. You come out next year.
Oh, wow, Tom, you're, you and Ralph are in for the long. Joe, right behind them.
Lifetime appointments, you know that.
Okay.
I know that now. I didn't know that back, way back when.
Okay.
All right, so, um, reports of officers.
Yep, hang on one second. I will bring that up. Okay.
You know, none of us can read that.
Why not? Okay. Here's my enforcement question of the month, and it's not necessarily enforcement per se. It's a question from a resident and I promised them I would bring it to your attention. And I've, I've already spoken with Ralph briefly about this, but I'm putting it formally to you all. Regarding zoning regulations pertaining to the keeping of livestock. Um, in situations, uh, where the property is in excess of five acres. Um, you may recall for both small and large livestock, five acres is the cutoff where the density requirements kind of are no longer pertinent. If it's under five acres, there's certain number of animals per acre, over five, there's none. So, um, the question was in a situation where a property is in excess of five acres and therefore has no animal density requirements. However, the usable acreage, i.e. free of steep slopes, et cetera, is definitely less than five acres. Does the commission have a position or desire to relook at that? Where this came into play is a.
I don't think, I don't think really need to discuss work comes into play at the moment.
No, and I'm not going to give specific addresses, but where this concern was raised, it was in a situation where it's in a lot in excess of that five acres. However, uh, there are steep slopes on the property and in a situation where the animals might be located largely to the front of the property. Was the commission, did the commission have any desire to look at that further? Or is the regs right now what you're comfortable with and you want to stay here?
So my, my first question to Stacy, when she brought that up was, does the property meet the current regs?
Yes.
And, and yes, it does. Um, then, so then the next question is, is it one of our priorities to go and look at these, um, farming regs again? Uh, after we just loosened them up, uh, two years ago, maybe it was three years ago.
And I would note that anybody who wants to have any of these larger animals and approaches me, um, obviously if there's any sort of wetlands around, that's getting looked at in terms of manure, in terms of all that other fun stuff. Um, but a lot of places, a lot of the people I'm dealing with are entirely amenable to working with the USDA and working with their recommendations for how to appropriately store, uh, store things. They're amenable to working with Torrington Area Health District to make sure there's no ramifications for well water, et cetera. So, and that is part and parcel of any review that I do, so if there's a question or concern, I ask for that information.
So my, my personal opinion is that we just worked on these regs not that long ago. And, um, I, I think at the moment, we probably have other bigger priorities to tackle, uh, rather than re, reworking these regs again in such a short time. However, you know, it's not just me. I, I'd like to know what everybody else thinks.
I think it would be difficult to define it. Um, just thinking about the issues, um, percent of slope, amount of open space, um, treed, not treed, um, so I think it would be hard to carve something out personally.
I, I tend to agree, and I also tend to agree that if what they are doing, that we, we have some sort of representation from USDA, et cetera, that they're in keeping with good standard agricultural practice.
And then also, you know, there's, there is the other outlet. If there is, um, a town resident that's not happy with the regs as they currently are, that resident can always, um, craft their own amendments and, and, and come to the commission and ask that they be put on the agenda, so I don't.
Yeah. Yeah, agricultural, changes to our agricultural section of the regulations is like a black hole. Changes to our agricultural section of the regulations is like a black hole. We can really spend a lot of time on this, you know?
Understood.
So, you know, this is almost like the question um, about, I have a rooster. Do I need a, do we need regulations, you know, for a rooster? And I'm like, listen, you know, you can have chickens and as long as the rooster doesn't crow, no one's going to care, you know? So we really don't need, you know, regulations to, to, to govern something that we're going to be spending hours on, you know, and days on. So it, it, unless we really need to deal with this, Stacy and Ralph, you know? We got other things I think we need to deal with, is my point.
I, I agree. I think we have much bigger fish to fry. Go ahead, Bill.
I, I was just, my comment was going to be on the, uh, on this one particular, what, what constitutes steep slope? You know, how my, I know my, uh, my fam, my grandparents, my family's uh, fen farm, uh, there's, there's some very, very steep slope, but it's grass. It's not a sheer cliff face, but it's pretty steep. And they pastured cows and horses, farmed that property for a long time. So what, you know, that's where, I don't know what, what's considered steep slope?
I think we, we're looking at, for the purposes of the regulation, 25%.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I, 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 I'm not good with that myself. I, I don't understand. I'd, I'm not good at visualizing it. Uh, that's what I mean by that. Um, so I, I don't really, it's 25%, but is that?
So figure that's, that's a, check my math, Tom. That's a one foot drop for every four feet of run.
Yeah, that's, that's. I, I'm sure there's probably areas in that where I'm thinking in that property that's much steeper than that even. Um, but regardless, uh, so I think you could keep livestock in wood, wooden, uh, woodlots. You can keep livestock at pretty steep slope, depending on livestock too, obviously.
Yeah.
Some things aren't, uh, amended to that, but some things are, so. Uh, and we live in Thomaston, which is, uh, has slope everywhere. That's, that's my comment on that, but, and it's probably not a priority for us either.
Duly noted.
So I, I think your enforcement question of the month has been answered, huh?
Yes. Stay tuned for the next edition. Um, so.
You want to give us the highlights reel here?
Yeah. Um, if you're not speaking, can, if I could ask if you could mute, because we are getting a little feedback. Um, so new actions in process. Two of the items on here aren't necessarily um, enforcement related, but they are things that are generating a decent amount of discussion and calls to me. So I, for lack of a better place to put it, I put it under here and that pertains to, what used to be five, 500 South Main Street and, um, Two Branch Road. Both situations are condominium situations. Two Branch Road is another, is the what ha, what the discussions were there. And we do have a path forward, I think on that, but it just kind of highlights, I think, the need for some of that storm water management planning that we were, that I mentioned earlier. There was one gazebo that was built, um, without benefit of any permits. And then there was another situation where the person.
Oh, that, uh, that brings up, uh, another point I think we probably should let the commission know too, um, about, um, you had the state marshal, uh, deliver the notice of violation?
Oh, yeah.
I think only you and I talked about the mail situation. I don't think that was brought forward to the whole commission.
I can, uh, this, and it does pertain because I am sending out a, 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 a sheath within the next week, so it will be an expense that you should be aware of. With all of, among the many fun things that COVID has brought us is the fact that when we send anything out to prove that we have provided notice to anybody, we get, we do certified mail return receipt requested, and that includes enforcement actions. Um, any of my enforcement actions go out, both regular mail, certified mail. The problem now with COVID is that because the postal workers, um, also have to maintain and follow requirements with, with regard to social distancing. They can't directly place the letter in the recipient's hand and have them sign for it. So what has been happening is they'll put on, you know, for instance, in one situation, they put it on the person's front porch and told the person, I'll sign it for you. Um, and that happened with a couple of recent letters. Um, I don't know if they were enforcement activities for you, for your commission or whether they were for wetlands. I think they were for wetlands. But the net result is that if they went anywhere legally, I couldn't provide the court satisfaction that the people who were served actually received the notice. And in one of the cases, actually in both of them, but particularly in one, um, I had gotten no response at all, one way or the other, from the recipient of this. And their lack of response was, you know, part of what led the wetlands commission to determine to uphold the enforcement notice that I had issued to them. And then we came to find out later that they may or may not have gotten properly noticed about the decision that was, that was made. So long and the short of this is in order to actually prove that somebody's been noticed, we have had to go to the point of having the state marshal, a, one of the state marshals that the town works with, serve any of my enforcement letters to the recipients. And that does obviously require a greater fee than the seven or eight dollars that a certified mailing would typically be. So just so you know, that is the case and it comes into play with a couple of things that are on my report that are going to cease and desist. So going further on here, I guess the main highlights. This property that I have up right now, um, is being offered for sale. Um, it's a, a junk and a somewhat of a hoarding issue that has somewhat improved, although not entirely. So I will be placing an enforcement order on the land records. Um, just so you know.
I have to step away for a moment. Can we just pause for a moment?
Sure.
I'll be right back.
Stacy, did you send that out?
Um, it has not yet gone to cease and desist. They were on second notice and I'd been talking with the landlord, landlord in that situation and then.
I, I mean a copy of this report.
No, not yet.
Okay.
Um.
No, I don't mean to discuss it when Ralph's not in there, but.
No, no problem.
I just wondered if I missed the report itself.
No, you, you did not. It was going to go out to you earlier today and then some other items came up. I want to know where that beach is that's on Ralph's, uh, screen right now, and I know that several other people use that one. I want to be on that beach right now.
I apologize for interruption. I'm back.
No problem. So, um, Tom had just questioned whether or not this had been mailed out, emailed out, and I had said it, it hadn't gone out quite yet. The intention was to get it out to you guys today, but then a, a couple of other things intervened. Um, so that's one that I'll be putting out there. Um, I guess the next one, um, would be this property. There's a landscaping business that seems to be operating from the property. A letter had been sent out. Um, things had improved for a little while. They seemed to be sliding back somewhat. And in the intervening time, it looks like there's some work actively going on there that may or may not be within the regulated area for wetlands. So that's a, an additional thing that I'm going to also be going back and sending them a letter about.
And remember, if it's a wetlands issue, you can, um, uh, issue a fine.
And there are two properties where that has started, that process has started. I think the other ones to be aware of would be 150 South Main Street. Um, a nearby property owner contacted me and requested I visit the site um, to see some things that were going on. And when I went, um, I observed that the garage doors for the detached, this is a sushi queue property. Um, when I went, the garage at the back, the doors were open and there was obviously work being done involving a very large roll-off container that effectively was taking up the entire parking area for sushi queue restaurant. Um, which was at that point open. Um, so I know we've had some discussions about the property in the past about whether or not that was the property owner using the garage for personal purposes or not. Which still is up for interpretation, but the reality is, is that it does seem to be impacting parking availability. So I'm duly letting you know that.
Did you go back through the, the records on that property to find out?
I did.
Exactly, exactly where we counted the parking?
Yeah, I did. And there was reference to, from what I saw. The re, the reference to the garage was not with regard to restaurant parking, but it was referenced in regard to possible parking for the apartment above. Um, now I should note that I've not received any complaints about the lack of parking from the res, the resident above, um, nor have patrons of the restaurant complained. Um, but as you will all likely know, it is a limited parking area. And like, for instance, on the day that I observed, the roll-off took a good portion of the parking area up. And then, um, there was, um, some of that small, you know, like the skid steer type equipment also present on the property, also taking up potential available parking. So.
So what? What did you do? Did you issue a notice of violation or no?
I, well, one had been issued when, um, way back in 2019, early 2019, or summer of 2019, I should say. Um, so if anything additional were to go out, it would be a second notice. So, um.
So the, um, the roll-off container, I'm sure was just a temporary thing.
It's not there any longer. I have, I have.
But the, uh, the other equipment, the skid steer and whatnot, I, I'm not sure about that. Um, is that still there?
Um, I have seen it there more than once. Yes. So, um, the reality is, and this tut leads into the very next thing on this list. Um, there are items that are potentially of commission concern in that whole general corner of Thomaston on a few of the properties. Um, one of which is right here. Um, a property that has 12 unregistered cars and various motorcycles, unregistered, all on the premises, and it's all right there in close proximity.
I mean, there's only one of you. You have to prioritize and certainly.
Exactly, but my.
12 unregistered cars is a bigger priority than.
Yeah.
Skid steer, you know?
And I, exactly. My, my point in mentioning this is that I think if one is going to look at one of those properties, one cannot help but see all of those properties. And, um, anything that would come from my office would probably be in the nature of a, a King Solomon moment where everybody is going to hear from me.
A King Solomon moment.
Splitting the baby. You know, along the lines of what has been seen cannot be unseen. If I, if I'm coming out for one thing, I'm coming out and seeing everything.
What's one Waterbury Road? Where, where is that?
That is Raff's.
Oh.
There are at the present moment, six unregistered vehicles there that are owned by the property owner of 172 South Main Street. The total of cars in question is 24 unregistered cars. Um, I have spoken with the state marshal that serves us, uh, who will be serving, um, cease and desist orders to 24 Atwood Road, to 172 South Main Street and one Waterbury Road, where the bulk of the 24 cars are all usually located. The others on the list are places where some of the cars get rotated. And they are not being subject to enforcement at the present time, but rather being advised that should anything get relocated there, that may have to unfortunately lead to enforcement, but not at the present moment. This is a situation where I have tried for two years to work with the person in question to resolve some of this. The situation gets better. One car did get registered. Some cars were temporarily removed, but then they came back. It's clear we're not getting anywhere and I am receiving complaints.
So Stacy, it's Bill. What's the deal here with this? What's the? I mean.
Yeah, is the, the person that owns all 24 cars, I mean, are they, are they trying to be a car dealer without actually being a car dealer?
No, this is not.
Are they just a hoarder?
I think the latter.
Ralph or, and Bill, um, Brian here. I, uh, I know the gentleman that owns these cars. Uh, 20 years ago, he had a collection of, uh, 55, six and seven Chevys on Atwood Road at his parents' place, but he's been doing this, I think, most of his life. Um, and then I don't know what happens. He, he gets rid of or he moves them around enough and everybody leaves him alone. I, I just, that's, he does, he collects them. I, I don't know why or how or what, but that's what he does.
A lot of the vehicles, I think, are Monte Carlos.
Correct.
Well, I, I, I'm thinking if you're getting more complaints, you're going to have to probably bump it up on the priority list.
Correct. It's, that's why it's at the, at the level it is where I have, I've drafted the cease and desist orders to go out and, um, the state marshal will be receive, picking them up on, on Monday and delivering them to the people in question.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, you know, that's what we gotta do.
Yeah. Um, and along those lines, in the nature of, I've tried to work with the person for a very long time and I'm getting nowhere, is, uh, 55 West Hillside, which is a pre-existing situation where a business is run from a property in an otherwise residential area. However, it is basically becoming a glorified junkyard. Um, tons of scrap metal, tons of things that have nothing to do whatsoever with the profession of the person who owns the property.
Where's, where's West Hillside? I'm drawing a blank.
Um, it's off of Litchfield Street. It's a very steep street.
Dead end road.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Um, well, I, again, this, this seems. Well, a again, this this seems, uh, you know, like it would be a higher priority too.
Stacy, who owns who owns who's the owner?
Uh, the same owner of one sixty five Ridgewood Acres.
Oh, it's Bill Pizzano?
Yes.
Another hoarder.
Why does that name sound familiar, Bill?
Because he he we had the same issues on Badbit Road.
This is another situation where I've tried working with the person. Things temporarily got better and then as of when I went out yesterday, it's the worst I've seen it.
Go ahead, ratchet up to the next level.
So that's that. Um, the items on the list referred to Attorney Byrne should look more or less familiar. The two items here are the ones that I mentioned earlier with regard to we discovered that the post office was signing for this, the um, registered mail. Two oh six Atwood Road, it was a um like a shed roofs type structure um built out in the middle of the property, essentially right in Wetlands area. Possibly the nature of where it was could very well have been in a setback. And since there's no actual primary dwelling on the property, you can't have an accessory dwelling or an accessory structure. So um, I had advised them. You know, went through my standard channels, the first notice, the second notice, the third notice, got nowhere, heard nothing back. Ultimately, it went to um, Wetlands does something known as a show cause hearing and they upheld the order. They don't have like a ZBA as as you do. They kind of they function as the place where somebody could bring a an appeal of my decision. But they upheld the order. Uh, the person in question never responded. Come to find out later, there was, you know, while they very likely received my notices, you know, I couldn't actually document it. So ultimately Attorney Byrne then also hired a um a marshal and had it served and that was successful. The person was noticed. The structure has both largely been taken down. The foundation still remains. It's um still sitting out there. You can kind of still see the wood pile there. However,
Is it a poured concrete foundation?
It's a sonotubes because it's out in the middle of the wetlands. So there is like the sonotubes and um like the floor of the thing, but the actual structure is not there anymore.
So that that's that doesn't fix it. That's still
No, agreed. Um, but they are apparently selling the property to a nearby neighbor. And um, I was contacted by the nearby neighbor's attorney who um, saw my letters when I didn't get any response. I filed everything on the land record. So as he was going through what he needed to go through to facilitate the sale, saw my letters. And last week he met me out on the property. Um, the property owner gave him gave him permission and me permission to go out and walk and see everything that needed to be tended to before I would be willing to release the letters from the land records. So that may get resolved that in that way.
That's okay.
Um, the second item is a situation where the the person in question had filled in a water course and may or may not be operating a business from the site. It certainly looks like it, but I can't find any definitive proof and it's hard to see on to the property from the road. But their attorney has contacted and reached out to Attorney Byrne. And hopefully we can get somewhere that way. And then these other items I am closing out the
So hold hold on. Don't go to the closed out stuff yet. Stick on cables line. So if they buried a water course, um, again, that's a wetlands violation and
Correct.
You can start fining them.
And it has gone that way and that has been started. I'm just letting you guys know because there's also the possibility of whether or not he's operating an unpermitted business from the premises. Because all of the burying of the water course is in the immediate vicinity of a detached structure. It looks like a garage with a potentially illegal apartment on the top for which there was enforcement action once upon a time as well. And while in the process of investigating that is when I saw the enormous amount of vehicles of a construction nature that are also on the premises. So
Under which our current regs allow none to be there.
Correct. And until the attorney contacted Attorney Byrne, there was no contact there either.
So Attorney Byrne, what um, what did their attorney have to say to you?
Well, he said that uh, he hadn't been out to the property yet, so he had just discussed the case over the phone with the property owner, Mr. Bartow. So they're supposed to have a meeting and uh, and then he would get back to me right now. He had the attorney, um, Trey Stevens. His thought would be, of course, is always with lies of wetlands violations is they want to come in with an after the fact permit. So we'll see where that goes, but that's his thought, but you know, there's been a lot of work on that, a lot of disturbance on that property. So um we'll see what can be done, but I guess uh, that was done may have caused quite a bit of um flooding to down slope properties. So I think we're going to need some remediation there. So we're at the initial stage there. Um, haven't looked at the zoning stuff yet with this.
And it and in in the meantime, the the wetlands fines are accruing on a daily basis, right?
Well, we haven't gotten that far. We haven't gotten to the second notice yet because when we got to the point of issuing the first, there's a process that has to be followed with the citations and I had sent the first the first notice and then it was at that point that the property owner apparently retained the services of an attorney who then contacted Attorney Byrne. And this was all before the holiday and um
Right.
The holiday intervened and then we had all of these nice quar, you know, quarantines related to COVID. So there's been a little interlude and now we're trying to pick up again.
Apparently, he did try to call Stacy. So um, he's he seems to be, as at this point, he's um doing what he said, you know, he's trying to even try to find a solution to this, but we'll see.
All right. Well, don't don't let off the pressure.
Indeed. Of course, they're playing the uh, you know, the uh, the violin has come out already about the property owner, you know, what a, you know, nice guy is. He's a, you know, veteran, this sort of thing. He may be a nice guy and all, but it's kind of not material to
Exactly. Yes, exactly.
So uh, that's more or less what's cooking. There's a couple of things I have chosen to close out and they're listed here. And um then without further ado, there are some things for discussion in executive session that's Attorney Byrne wanted to discuss with you.
And I am anxious to get to that. Um, are we at a good point to uh, move into that now?
If you'd like to, just let me know.
Yeah. So all right. So if somebody would please make a motion to go into executive session and to invite in Stacy and Attorney Byrne.
Tom Mueller so moved at nine PM.
Is there a second to the motion? Joe Hart, you have to unmute yourself before you second it.
Joe Hart's second.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the motion? Joe Hart, how do you vote on the motion?
Joe Hart's aye.
Tom Mueller, how do you vote?
Tom Mueller, aye.
Elizabeth Jameson, how do you vote?
Elizabeth Jameson, aye.
And Bill Guerra, how do you vote?
Bill Guerra, aye.
And Ralph Salone also votes aye. So motion carries unanimously. So you can um, stop the streaming and stop the